I'd like to welcome everybody tonight for our meeting and I'm going to turn over the mayor right now for dedication. Yes, Purple Heart City Day, this is indeed a very, very special day in the city of New Franklin, a very special event for our city, a day that we will declare and forever remember and acknowledge as Purple Heart Day in the city of New Franklin. And certainly, it couldn't be more timely, could it? We will, I want to welcome all the esteemed guests, and we're going to have some introductions here shortly. I want to welcome so sincerely the Purple Heart recipients from New Franklin, associated with New Franklin that are here with us, the families of some of the Purple Heart recipients who have already passed. And we're so honored that you are with us. I'll introduce Larry Emery here in a minute, he's the commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 699. In June of this year, we met with Larry, with Terry Heinzman, and they discussed with us that the possibility of honoring this city, of being designated a Purple Heart City, and we were thrilled with the possibility of that honor. There is, as you know, a very proud heritage in New Franklin, Manchester, whatever you might call it, over the years, but not just Manchester, of course, all of New Franklin, in terms of those who have served in the military. Just recently, last week, Rosie Milliken, who's with us, she didn't know I'd mentioned her name, presented us with a binder of all of the veterans who are buried in the New Franklin cemeteries, 243 in all, all the way back to the Civil War and continuing. So it's, you know, the heritage here for military service in New Franklin is well-established and well-earned. And finally, before I bring Larry up here, I want to share a comment that he made to us at when we met with him in June, talking about what it means. Because, you know, it's easy, you know, we got a beautiful cake back there with the Purple Heart, and you see the sign, and yeah, it's a medal, but what it took and what it meant for these men, these men, to earn that, and what it means to the families, what it means to those who were awarded posthumously, the honor that goes with it, and as Larry shared with us, a man leaves the war, but the war never leaves the man, and it's good to remember. So we are honored to have the recipients with us, but first, at this time, I'm going to ask Larry Emery to come and join me here. Larry is the commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 699, he's a junior vice commander of the State of Ohio Military Order of the Purple Heart. Larry served in the Marine Corps in Vietnam, where he earned a Purple Heart and also a Silver Star. Larry was inducted into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for valor, and he currently resides in the North Canton area. So we're so honored to have you here with us, Larry, and at this time, I'd like to present you with a proclamation. This is the mayor's proclamation, City of New Franklin, Ohio, recognizing Purple Heart Day September 15th, 2021. Whereas the Order of the Purple Heart for Military Merit, established by General George Washington during the Revolutionary War, is the oldest military decoration for military merit in the world, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal is presented in the name of the President of the United States to members of the military wounded in combat by enemy forces, and subsequently to the next akin of members of the military killed in combat. Whereas the Military Order of the Purple Heart was formed in 1932 and chartered by Congress in 1958, the Military Order of the Purple Heart is composed of military men and women who received the Purple Heart Medal, and it is the only congressionally-commissioned organization comprised strictly of United States combat veterans. Whereas, in recognition of the estimated 1.8 million veterans who have been bestowed this prestigious medal, the mayor and city council of New Franklin desire to join the many other cities in the nation to becoming Purple Heart City, now therefore, I, Paul F. Adamson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of New Franklin, Ohio, do hereby recognize this 15th day of September 2021 as Purple Heart Day, and hereby express the deepest gratitude to those who have faithfully served in defense of our freedoms. I proudly am prepared to accept the official designation of Purple Heart City on behalf of the city of New Franklin, and confirm our commitment to honor those who serve and have served so faithfully in defense of our freedoms, and gratefully acknowledge their sacrifice, bravery, and unwavering commitment as patriots this 15th day of September 2021. I would like to present this to you. Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have some presentations for you as well. Rick, would you just bring up your plaque?
You'll introduce you guys though?
Sure. Okay. This is a plaque for your city hall or whatever. The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride for the city of New Franklin, Ohio, for your dedication and support, honoring America's combat wounded veterans becoming the Purple Heart City, presented by the patriot members of the Department of Ohio Military Order of the Purple Heart, USA. Could you display that in here?
Sure will. It's plain as rock, that's for sure.
Do you have a sign for here at the city hall, whatever, and...
Oh, yeah, parking. Yes, absolutely, we'll be happy to post this. And I'm going to mention it again at closing, but you'll see some of the signs back there by the cake that are going to be posted at the entrance to the city from all locations. But yes, this will be proudly installed and posted, and reserved for, a spot reserved in our parking lot for Purple Heart awardees. Thank you very much.
And Don? Thank you. And we have a plaque, we'll display in your city hall or whatever, and one for this thing, and let's get it right side up. There we go. Yeah. Oh, beautiful. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce my, some of my officers here at this time. Would you stand and give your name and your branch of service, or your name, sir?
My name's Rick Stolz, I served in the United States Army with the 25th Infantry Division in Vietnam. I received my first wound when I was there three weeks, I had just been there three weeks. Only 19 years old. I received my second wound on May 20th, 1970, in the Republic of Cambodia. And I grew up in the African area, but I drive us down here for the last 55 years, so thank you.
Good, thank you. I'm Terry Heinzman, I served in the Army, served in Vietnam, '67, '68. I was a first lieutenant infantry. I'm proud to have a combat infantry badge, and proud to have my Purple Heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hugh Walsher, I live down the street in Montgomery Township. I was in the US Army Combat Infantry Vietnam in 1969, 1970.
I met Fass, my wife and I graduated from Manchester in, well, which year, well, way back. I entered Vietnam at the age of 19, I was a combat medic for two tours in Vietnam, the infantry. We earned our few, I have two Purple Hearts, the first tour I received one, and the second tour set me home. So I figured, I should have figured it the first way. But I'm honored to be here, and I'm a chaplain through the National Servant Service, and for the National Servant Service, another Vietnam organization. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Donald Lloyd, I served with First Cav Air Mobile Division, Vietnam, '68. I received a Purple Heart in May of '68, my 122 rocket, and mortar attacks, so that's where I was at when everything happened to me. Thank you for being here, and glad to see all of you.
All right, at this point, first of all, you know, one more time for this group. All right, I have a list, and I think it's a thorough list, at least of the folks that were able to even join us, some weren't, some have family members here. I'm going to go through, and I'll ask if the individual is here, we're going to ask you to come forward, if somebody from the family instead is here, I may ask you to come forward, and we have a medal to present to each of you, which is described on one side, Military Order of the Purple Heart, Department of Ohio, and the inscription, "All gave some, some gave all." First of all, George Andrela, I know George's past, does anybody here with George's family? All right, we'll have this for him, that's a proud family here in this area, and I know many, many of you knew George, and perhaps one of you fellows, when you come up, maybe you can say a few words about George when you do. George served in the Marines and received his Purple Heart in Vietnam. Next on the list, and Ed, you just introduced yourself, we're going to ask you to come forward. Ed Fass, probably already has one of these, but Ed, as you know, served in the Army, and you've heard about his service in Vietnam. And Ed, we're so proud of you, and we're so thankful for your service, and we thank you for being here with us, and we ask you to accept this as a small token of appreciation. Thank you. You know, and I missed part of this inscription, which many of us familiar with, "All gave some, some gave all," and also appears written, "Still giving." All right, next on the list, Dave Galway. Dave, please come forward. As we honored him at our Memorial Day event, served in Vietnam, two Purple Hearts. Do you want to tell the folks about your service, or anything about your...
Well, I was in the Army, I was in '69, '70, went to Vietnam in '69, wounded, fast, first three weeks, so spent time in the hospital, sent back out, went back to my unit, got wounded again, was sent to Japan, spent time in hospital in Japan, and then was relocated my last 15 months in Hawaii. So it didn't turn out too bad. My daughter's here, my granddaughter.
Great, thank you.
Hey, friends.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Jeff Gerstenslager. I don't know if anybody from the Gerstenslager family was able to make it or not.
I talked to him today, he said he's going to come, probably.
You'll speak to him, perhaps? You can speak a little bit about him.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Yeah, Jeff, he was a year ahead of me in high school, and one day at the school, he came into school, he was on leave, and he came in with his airborne uniform on. Now, he was standing tall, and when I walked out and I saw him in the lobby, I said, "Man, what is all this?" He says, "I'm airborne." Long story short, that's what pursued me to go airborne, Jeff. And I'd kid him all the time, I also kid him all the time about he got shot in the head. And he even brought the helmets on, they were full of oil. But he did survive, and he's nutty as ever, and I'm disappointed he's not here.
Well, thank you for sharing that, Gary, we'll make sure he gets remembered in that as well. Thank you. You know, before I move on, someone knows George, can they tell the story? Does anybody know his background, his history?
I don't know the story. I know when he came back from the service.
Ed?
George Andrela, I mentioned him in my closing prayer, he married my cousin, and we've known him. He was one of the ones who came back terribly wounded and ended up dying a few years later. And the first job I had was working in an urgency room at a bar, and he came in one night, took his shirt off, and it just made me, just stunned me a little. If I could tell you the truth, I've seen a lot of things, but yeah, it's pretty, it's true, it's true.
God bless you. Thank you for sharing that. All right, the next gentleman is out of state, I don't know if any of the family were able to make it, Dean Hale, served in the Navy during the Vietnam War. Anybody know Dale or of Dale?
Yeah, he's a classmate of mine, he's one of those that lived away, and when I was trying to get names of people to put on a plaque that less than know his bench, from the class, our class, he's one of the names that came up after I had to plaque him. So I met him, I talked to him recently, probably within two years. And he's in good health, and we chatted for about an hour, and, but he was wounded in Vietnam and got his Purple Heart.
Very good, thanks, Gary. Well, we'll make sure that we get this down to Dean, we'll find him contact information, and we'll get this to him.
He has a sister, of course, probably somewhere in...
We also, yes, sure, we also wanted to, we have Terry Heinzman on the list, and Terry, you may have one of these, but why don't you come on up and get another?
Oh, good, all right.
Well, Terry was, Terry came with Larry, and we met, we had, we had a, it was an immediate bond.
It was funny, I lived in Manchester for quite a few years, and then I moved to Canal Fulton, but instead of calling it New Franklin, I still would call it Manchester. But I think a lot of what I already said, I served in Vietnam, '67, '68, I was in the 1st8 Cav, 1st Cav Air Mobile, I was a ranger, I was a paratrooper. I was one of them crazy guys that jumped out of a plane.
Yeah.
But I don't have too much more to say, I really enjoyed this town, I, even though I live in Canal Fulton, I go right through here.
Close enough. All right, Terry, thank you so much, God bless your service. Next up, one of the young guys, Matt Hicks, please come forward, Matt. Matt served in the Marine Corps in Afghanistan, and he is willing to tell us about two Purple Hearts.
So I was in the Marine Corps from 2003 to 2014, the two, one was Iraq, one Afghanistan. And I was in the Marines.
Two Purple Hearts, so... Yeah, God bless you. Well, Matt, thank you so much for your service, and... And Matt's service continues here in the community, he sits on some of our boards, he's active in the school community, in the church community, and in the New Franklin community. We're so blessed to have you here, and we thank you so much for your service. Next, I have, I'm going to save one guy so last, but Paul Kokaski, anybody here from Paul Kokaski?
We talked to his daughter, she's in Kentucky, and he served and received two Purple Hearts. He was armed, and he was actually wounded at Pearl Harbor, and then he was wounded again in the Pacific Theater.
Wow.
And he's deceased, he was World War II, obviously.
All right, well, thank you so much.
And he lived here in New Franklin for over 50 years, aboard an Ak-10, lived out here. Can we can get that through his...
All right, we will be sure to, thank you. All right, next, I mentioned and honored Gary Pinion, and I know, many of you know Gary, I know my wife knew Gary well. Gary is deceased, I don't know if anybody here gets here from his family, I'm not sure what family he has left here quite frankly, but again, Gary, would you mind sharing a few thoughts on his...
I'm over at the Veterans Park in Clinton, so I interact with a lot of these people, and we did a bench for Andrela and Pinion over there, and I was fortunate enough to emcee that ceremony, one presented and unveiled a bench, but yes, his daughter came up and spoke on his behalf, and Gary came home and he was, took a lot of shrapnel to the upper chest and face, and he had a little bit of sight left, and when they were trying to repair, as I understand it, a eye socket, they clipped the optical nerve, and it blinded completely. And one of the things that really got to me was, she was speaking, she said, "My dad never saw me."
Ah, gee.
And still choked me up, but she also did, she lightened everything up when she said, "He had a Corvette, and his buddies would take him over to the Falcon, and he loved to go there and be driven around, and he loved speed, faster, faster." You know, he's one of the blind guy, I guess, you know, that's what he's, you know, sensation is, more power to him. But I never got to drive his Corvette, because we lived in Columbus for 18 years, so I miss that. I've never really driven a Corvette.
Dave? I told you I'd let you track it. All right, thank you very much. But you got to fill it up. Did I mention Glenn Befferd already?
No.
Okay, good, well, thank you. Glenn served in the Army, he served in Vietnam, I don't know if anybody from the Befferd family is here, or Glenn? I guess I'm going to call on you again, Gary, I'm assuming this is, Gary was extremely helpful to us in trying to garner this list of names, and I'm assuming Glenn, perhaps is somebody that you came across or that you knew there?
He did not come to our 50-year reunion, and he's another one of the two men that didn't respond to our calls to get on the plaque. So about two months after we'd had the plaque made, we put both of those names, Dean Hale and Glenn Befferd, on a separate break below the plaque, so they are bonded over there across these benches. Glenn was a classmate, didn't pal with him very much, I knew him, and I did know that he received a Purple Heart, and I've actually, unfortunately, to say that I've not had any contact with him in standards.
Well, we'll find a way to reach him and reach family, and we'll get this to him.
Somebody told me he's kind of quiet, and he lives out in Norton somewhere.
All right, okay, well, we'll make sure we get the medal to him. All right, well, we have two more, and both of them, hey, all of you are close to our hearts, that's for sure, but two that so many know, and so at this point, I'm going to acknowledge Rusty Miller. If my wife were here, and for health reasons, she's not, and she's okay, she speaks so gloatingly about Rusty, and every time his name comes up, she tells me that you'd be, you could not help but love him, and I've heard that universally from everybody that knew him. And, and, I don't know, is anybody here from the, knowing family? Of course you are! Oh, my goodness, behind the, yeah, Sarah, well, I should come to you, perhaps?
Oh, no.
You coming to me?
That's fine.
Come on, come on, come on, come on. All right, tell everybody who you are.
Well, I'm right now, I'm known as Jeannie Miller, was Paul Miller's wife, and Rusty was my, our first son.
Yeah, God love you.
And he was everything you say.
Yeah, I've heard that over and over from everybody.
And I knew your wife, and she knew my son.
Yeah, well, stay in room with me here for a minute. Gary, do you want to talk a little bit about, will you tell us a little bit about Rusty? I know a lot of people knew his story, either you or Dave, I think it deserves to be told.
Come on, you're a lot older.
All right, I'll walk back, I don't have to say these words, I'm...
It's a little hard for me.
No, you're doing fine, you're just prepping, because you're up next.
This is hard, very hard for me. Rusty was a great friend throughout high school, we used to sleep out in their barn, and we'd go out in the middle of the night and raise hell, and Mrs. Miller would cook us pancakes, not all the time, but sometimes. But Rusty, he was just so likable, I mean, the guy never had anything but a smile on his face, and a laugh that is unforgettable. To this day, there are times I can hear him. I got home 10 days before we got to work. It was hard, you know, and there's this thing called survivor's guilt. If it wasn't for that lady there, my wife, she brought me through a lot, through, you know, just the feeling of all that, and for so many years, after we moved back here from Columbus, I would go by, go by the Miller's house, and I would say, "I'm going to stop." And I'd go, and we lived a mile apart on Center Road, and I just could not bring it to myself to stop. And one day, we had to wait for another Manchester guy that died of Agent Orange issues, and his best friend came, and I took him over to the Veterans Park, and I said, "You know, I'd sure like to get Rusty a bench." And he reaches in his pocket and he hands me a hundred dollar bill, and Barb says to me, "You're committed now." Now, I've never done anything like that before, you know, raising money, but I just want to say to you that in about three and a half months, we had the money. And I was able to arrange for the Marines, do the Honor Guard, actually, the Color Guard, the fence dedication, to this day, it was the biggest fence dedication that we had at that park, and we've had a lot of it, and...
Gary, can you share how you passed?
Oh, my gosh, there's a, there's a story in Vietnam Magazine, I believe it's December 2003, or somewhere around there, I have the magazine, it's called Vietnam Magazine, and it's documented by the medic, the corpsmen in the Marines, corpsmen, we had medics, you read corpsmen. It mentions how he, they were working their way down a mountain, and they made it to a rocky area where they were taking, you know, catching their breath and, you know, having a break, I guess. and, you know, having a break, I guess, not a break, because it was still flying, you know, combat around. But a grenade came into their area and hit him in the chest. And he caught it with his machine gun. He was a machine gunner for the squad. And he just looked up and it exploded and he saved about three other lives. So, you know, I mentioned, you know, when I was talking to Bob Miller, his dad, he said, I said, you know, "He should have a Congressional Medal of Honor." And Bob said to me, maybe you remember this, Gene, he says, "A drawer, a drawer full of medals isn't gonna bring him back." Do you remember that? So...
Gary, thank you so much. And we're gonna call on you again in just a second. Please, on behalf of the City of New Franklin, Council of Mayor, please accept this very small token of our deep and sincere gratitude and appreciation.
I gotta say, I do have one story about Rusty that I...
Yeah, please share.
...got going here when you were talking about the smiles. He was always smiling, even at his camp. And his, what do you call him, the drill sergeant, sergeant was getting mad at him, always smiling. He says, "I'm gonna get that off of your face before you leave here." The day he was leaving the camp, the sergeant came up to him and says, "Okay, Miller, give it to me one more time."
All right, well, here's someone you haven't heard from. No, Gary, come on up. And we thank Gary. But what he's done in the Veterans Park in Clinton, and what he continues to do to commemorate the service of the men and women who are there for us and for their families. You know, we can never thank you enough for that. I'm so glad you're standing here next to me so we can thank you publicly for that as well. And I'm gonna ask you to, you served your service. You served in the Army in Vietnam and you received a Purple Heart. You, I always should tell everybody else a story. I don't know if you want to tell your story, if you want to share a few comments about...
How about I give you the reading, Dave?
That's fine.
Yeah, I was drafted in sixty-six, right out of high school, pretty much. And as I mentioned, Jeff Burton's tiger. When I went into the Army and I got out of boot camp, I knew I wanted to be an airborne. And anyways, I did that and I knew it was gonna probably send me to Vietnam. You know, back then, you're all gun, oh, right. Well, I got deployed to the Hundred and First Airborne Division, Seventeenth Cav, which fortunately I wasn't a grunt like this, you guys. I was a cav, okay? And how I got my Purple Heart, I'll give a little reminder. We looked it up. But I survived. You know, today's world, I would, I would have survived with the technology that these cats put into this, more powerful. Anyways, I did make it home. And Barb was at the airport waiting on me. And I saved you. She kept me steady. You know, she kept me calm, posted. And I have one more I want to share with you. Rosie mentioned to you, and also John mentioned to me one time recently about, since we're a Purple Heart city, we have the New Franklin bench over there. And I called Ken Noon today, this morning. I actually connected with him today. And he, I told him about it, the New Franklin bench, and put him a Purple Heart on it, a Purple Heart City on the seat. And I said, "Give me a price." I tell the mayor tonight. And he says, "I'll just do it." So he will do it. I said, "Do you want us?" I said, "You know, you gotta charge him something." He says, "Have him make a donation to the park, Gary, I'll just do it."
Well, we'll do that and we'll certainly honor him. And let us know when that occurs and we'll make sure we have a ceremony down there to commemorate that as well. So Gary, God bless you. Thank you so much for all of you. Wow. You know, I knew this would be nice. I didn't know it would be this nice. And we're just all honored. You know, I speak on behalf of myself, but also on behalf of everybody sitting up here on council, that we are so, we're just so blessed that you are with us. We thank you for joining us this evening. We have the signs in the back. You'll see when you go and get your cake, and you have to stick and get some cake and some refreshments. Those signs will be going up at all the entrances at all of our city limits. Those will be posted so that the world will know when they come to New Franklin, they will see the sign that says, "Welcome to our Purple Heart City, New Franklin, Ohio." With that, at this time, I'm gonna call him, if anything, if you want to add at this point.
Yes, I'd just like to say something about the veterans. And first of all, I'd like to thank this gentleman right here, Mr. Dix, for all the effort that he does for the veterans. And he's helped me personally. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. And it's just such an honor and everything to be here tonight. And to make the Purple Heart City, you know, and it's, it's really great to honor all the veterans, and that's what it's all about. You're saying, "Welcome home to these veterans." And hopefully, you know, you'll get some people, some of the veterans will come here and live here and support your city. And that's what it's all about. Our Purple Heart recipients have made enormous sacrifices for America. And this is an opportunity to say thank you on behalf of a grateful nation. And for some, this will be the homecoming that they've never had. They will bear the scars of war for a lifetime, but also they have the admiration of all the Americans. And throughout the year, at times like this, we set time aside to reflect, to recall, to recognize and to honor, and to celebrate the service and sacrifice of those who have shouldered the burden and the responsibility of defending our freedom. Through these gatherings, we also rededicate ourselves. And we also feel President Abraham Lincoln's charge to all Americans to care for those who have borne the battle and for their families as well. Today, less than one percent, less than one percent of the population bears the responsibility of our national defense. Today, just over seven percent of the, all the Americans are living today to wear a nation's uniform. Think about that. Our chapter of the Purple Heart is dedicating, is dedicated to serving all veterans of every generation with commitment and respect equal to their service and their sacrifice. This is a noble mission, and we consider this our sacred duty. As we work with the veterans and try to mend bodies and spirits, as we guide veterans to life-saving benefits, as we try to provide honored funeral resting places, let us all take pride in our willingness to fulfill our obligations for services already rendered, down payments already made, and wellness already sacrificed by veterans to whom we owe so very much. Our gratitude should be expressed for those veterans every single day of the year and not just on certain holidays. In this way, the veterans and their families will never have to question the readiness of this great country to meet their needs and to live productive lives with respect and the dignity that they so deserve. There will never be enough that we can do for those who have given so much to the rest of us. We must do this right and we must do this well for those future generations of Americans who deserve to have their constitutions protected and their freedoms preserved. On this day, the Purple Heart Chapter 699 honors the service and sacrifices of the men and women of New Franklin, Ohio, who have served at various duty stations around the globe and have done so with unwavering commitment to protect all that we hold dear. So on behalf of New Franklin, Ohio, Chapter 699 of the Purple Heart, and Americans everywhere, it is our privilege today and every day to help the entire nation to demonstrate its debt of gratitude to all those who have so willingly fulfilled citizenship's highest calling. May Almighty God bless everyone who has served, is serving now, and who will serve this great nation in whatever capacity in the future. And please remember, all gave some, but some gave all that they could give. I thank you for having us tonight. It's a very meaningful thing for me.
Turn it back over to me here. You can read that sign, please. You know, I referenced this sign. And I'm glad Katie's bringing it up here because I want to acknowledge Katie Smith, who did so much as usual to make this happen. She coordinated with Larry, with Gary, and...
Yes, very well done.
With our vets, so with Dave as well. And thank you. Yeah, I had to know it, family. I asked to have this brought up again, which, as we said before, welcome to our Purple Heart City, New Franklin, Ohio. So these will be, these will be posted at all of our borders. And you know, people are gonna come by and see them and they're gonna think. But it strikes me that those of us who were fortunate enough to be here tonight and hear some of the stories behind the medal, I'm sure it'll mean something to us every time we go by. And I think our duty is to share that and to make sure that that honor is acknowledged, again, as you said, not just on specific days, but every day. So we thank you again, Larry. We can't thank you enough for being here with us. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call forward Bishop Edmund Fash, PhD. He's a chaplain of American Legion Post 566 VFW 1066. He's a chaplain of the, as you told us, I think of the National Cemetery. And we're gonna ask him to lead us in a benediction congregation.
I have to say, this is one of the most touching veterans ceremonies I've ever been to. I was almost in tears when we did it. We're thankful, I'm thankful that I'm here and the people who do this here. And I'm gonna go to the first page and have to say it. My Heavenly Father, all the faith value has, those are uncovered, please uncover. My Heavenly Father, we thank you for another city that is not a Purple Heart community. The leadership of New Franklin is honoring men and women who are wounded, shedding their blood in our country's wars. The people of New Franklin appreciate this honor. New Franklin loves our soldiers not only in the wars, but also while they, after they came home. To my mind, two of them I remembered as I was writing this prayer were Rusty Miller, who passed in Vietnam, and George Angela, my cousin, who, who, who passed later. We praise and thank you, Lord. For the, excuse me, I'm sorry. We praise and thank you, Lord, for the community that accepted this honor, and we are honored that they accepted it. We say this in your Son, Jesus Christ's name.
All right, well, in two minutes, in a moment, we're gonna take a break and we'll have some fellowship and some refreshments. You gotta see the cake before we cut it. It's spectacular. So please, if you would like, we'll take a little break and have some fellowship and get a chance to thank some of the folks that are here and maybe you can have one round of applause. Well, you missed it.
Mayor, I'm Don Stark. Pardon me, that's, I didn't know you were coming. I would've, I could've stayed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Don, will you want to come on?
I'm Don Stark. I'm, no, I'm a, I'm the publisher of the Diddy 214 Chronicle, the newspaper for veterans and all who love them. I've been, I think I should have a house here because I'm here, I'm here more than I am at home. But I drove in from Clayton, I'm sorry, I got in about seven minutes late in here. I got stuck at the, at your main library at Akron. The doors were locked and I couldn't get in to deliver four hundred and fifty papers. And it's like, I had to wait because I just wasn't gonna drive back to get the papers to them. So it's been my pleasure to come down here. Rosie called me and we chatted for quite a while. And then Katie, while I, I dialed Katie and she, I said, "Is there anything? Can I, can I give something to my artist to get this done?" And she says, "It's done, I'm doing it right now." I'm like, wow! So if you'd like to talk to me about doing some artwork with this tape, we could talk about it. No, I'll tell you what, this, this has been a, I'm glad I drove the whole way. It was not the easiest line for me. My phone was not reacting to new anything. You know, I just, I could not get in here. But I finally made it. And I, all I want to say is thanks for your service, guys, and ladies, of course. And I just, I really appreciate our service. Believe me when I tell you that, I just, I've only been a publisher for about a half a year. I've been selling for him for about a year and a half and he took ill. And without question, when he asked me to take it over, I did immediately. So, so you probably see a lot of me. I hope, the other thing that I want to tell you is I brought a bundle of papers in, fifty up in there, and I could bring another bundle if you want to put them in the, for the police and whatever for that. I'll bring another bundle in when we get out. So thank you very much.
Don, you love the ad that's in this, or not the ad, but the...
Page sixteen, Katie zipped up, Rose called and said, "Hey, can you do this?" And I said, "I can do anything I want to do, but there's a, up in the corner up here, page sixteen is, 'Congratulations, New Franklin, Ohio, on becoming a Purple Heart city. Please join us Wednesday, September fifteen, twenty twenty-one, at six p.m. for proclamation by Mayor Paul Adamson and recognition of Purple Heart recipients and their families. New Franklin City Hall, fifty-six eleven, Manchester Road, New Franklin, Ohio, four four three one nine, with the L word for New Franklin at the bottom.'" So thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. I know it means a lot. We really appreciate you being here and taking the time. All right, I think with that, we'll be prepared to take a little break. If anybody, if, please stick around, anybody that was honored, I don't know if there's any more photographs to be taken, but before you leave, we'll do that and we'll kind of snap those photos. And finally, I guess, one final round of applause for all of you who came and were honored.
By the way, I was trying to get it. So you know.